Get the call to meet in order for October fourth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll start with the pledge.
Pledge of the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individuals with liberty and justice for all.
Will, you're on the panel.
Okay, warrant bills all signed it up?
Yep.
Yep.
Open the sandbags.
Approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Ten minutes of the last meeting?
We've moved to approve the minutes from the September thirtieth meeting.
Second.
All in favor? County Ministers Weekly Update.
All right, just a couple of things today for this week. First is to let you know that Sebago Tech Mix is going to be returning to the transfer station. I confirmed with Robin that he'll be there Friday morning. They just have a little bit of surveying left to do before they can put the plan together. So they'll be there Friday between eight and eight-thirty. Ed, if you want to join them. Um.
What's the process for once that plan is?
So once they've finished, once they've finished the survey, they'll start drafting layouts based on the information they've gathered and submit some different plans to you based on their recommendation. Yes, yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, next, Tom, I know you've been following the Melsom Watershed emails from Sanford.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to update you. We did confirm today that yourself, Lee, and Adele all have appointments through June of two thousand twenty-four.
Okay.
So those are Acton residents. Representative's still valid, all set for that meeting. Looks like you're working out a date.
There, uh, the agenda is still in flux on there?
Yes, right now it looks like they're trying to agree on a date.
Okay.
And I did send you a note. There was someone that chimed into the thread saying that she'd sold her property in Acton and we might want to look for a new representative. Um, but I didn't know, I don't have her.
On the board?
No, I don't have her as one of the three, so.
Oh, is Adele one of the?
Adele is on there. She's valid. Lee is valid. But there was only three. Is that how it's always been? So.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Maybe it's a typo, but take a look at it.
Usually I person Shapley and Acton.
Well, Acton has two, and then Shapley, yeah, Shapley has a Sleckman and two, yeah.
You know, there's, I, can I talk about this for a minute?
Of course.
Um, I'm not sure that I've spoken to you about it, but um, I had requested last year an accounting of the fund
Mm-hmm.
that we, the two towns contribute to and Sanford. And for the last three years, I wanted to see um, what the additions were, contributions were, and what the expenditures were. And um, Alex, who's like a facilities director in the time Sanford, very nice gentleman, finally responded and he showed that uh, three years ago, the account had a significant deficit.
Mm-hmm.
And then in the last two years, it had a significant surplus. And so um, my position is that they were not authorized to incur a deficit. They are responsible for managing that fund and that Acton will not take any responsibility for that. And the extent to which there is a surplus uh, in the two subsequent years, I would want that used to reduce the amount that we would otherwise have to contribute this year for the coming year's budget. So that's the position I'm going to take with them unless there's concern with board members here.
Well, I think that's been a concern and the Finance Committee brought up the last couple of years, the money's going to that, so.
I might want to go back further, given what the results have been. Um, and I may ask for a list of expenditures so that we can see exactly what the expenditures are for. So this will be ongoing. My guess is it's going to ruffle a few feathers along the way, but just wanted you to be aware of it, but I think we're within our rights to take this action. Okay, thank you.
Um, next is just a follow-up from the main municipal visit we had with the insurance company. Um, he came out and looked at several of the town buildings. Um, some were in better condition than others, let's just say. Um, we'll release more details when the final report comes from him.
Departments have been notified, they're working on issues.
The departments were notified before they came out.
Notified after the fact that there's some issues.
Uh, well, we don't have a report and then the departments that were notified were the ones that were just blatantly not picked up to a, you know, a presentable level. Um, the other departments haven't been notified because I don't know what they're going to find.
Which properties were those?
Um, in general that we visited?
Had the issues.
The um, rec food.
The rec department?
The um, rec food building was.
Anything else?
Um, Blueberry Hill Tower was in very poor condition. Um.
That's something we lease?
The, yes, we leased the building, right.
We leased the property and they were concerned from a safety perspective on both issues?
Well, I wasn't present, one of, I wasn't present, but based on the pictures and Ed, and Ed can, and Ed can give you a little more information. We were just surprised at the condition of it. I don't think that we visited it prior to the insurance. So nature, rodents, some infestation has taken place and normally, you know, like with the fitness center that he came over and looked at, you know, Friday before, we sent staff over to look at it.
Who's responsible for the maintenance on the rec facility?
Uh, well, they wasn't, it was the, so the, the director was told on Friday that he would be out there looking at A, B, and C and to please pick it up and make sure it was an orderly.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
That's the director's job to make sure that.
That's, I'm, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah. Um, so he also went to the San and Salt Building. I didn't hear anything about that and transfer station. I didn't hear anything about that, so. Not, no, no early thumbs up yet. We haven't seen the report, but we didn't get any immediate nods.
Who was, which one of you guys, you weren't with him?
But I think they both spent time over the weekend.
They were happy with the salt charges, like this is the cleanest one I've seen.
Right, so that's good. And did he say anything about the transfer station?
Good, thanks for doing that.
That, and it may just, it may be new departments. I mean, you know, when Ed and I met with the fire chief, he was, you know, it just wasn't an area that he had picked up going to regularly, so.
Yeah, obviously this probably won't happen again because maybe the next time it comes, y'all will know to make sure that gets taken.
And there, he's following up with those two places within two weeks, so they're working on cleaning it up. Um, all right, next is the Sheriff's Department log for September. It's a doozy. Uh, beginning of the month, there was a domestic disturbance on Flat Ground Road with an arrest. Uh, next event on the seventh responded to Emory Mills and Shapley for a motorcycle crash. Um, looks like a pretty serious motorcycle crash. And some charges, there was driving to endanger, leaving the scene, and operating without a license came out of that one. September seventh, on the Shapley Sanford line, Emory Mills, uh, there was a vehicle rollover, uh, looked like alcohol was involved. September eighth, they investigated a burglary at a camp on Man Road. Uh, two subjects were found squatting and they gave witnesses, they eventually uh, fled the scene with many items.
You say squatting?
Squatting, the two subjects.
Living in the house or something?
Yeah, it looks like it. Two subjects were found to be squatting in it by a family friend.
Okay.
Uh, September tenth, there took a report of a stolen um, vehicle that was last seen parked on private property on Back Road near the power lines. Um, and the transient was later arrested in Biddeford and that person was in possession of the vehicle. September tenth, there was a theft that occurred in Back Road and Shapley. The homeowner reported six thousand dollars stolen from the safe. Investigation is ongoing. Uh, September tenth, responded to Apple Valley Campground for domestic disturbance. Uh, yes, someone was charged. September eleventh, there was an unattended death at Pine Springs, uh, eighty-two-year-old male, doesn't look like anything suspicious. September twenty-fifth, there was, they were dispatched to Hopper Road in Acton for a rollover. Uh, upon arrival, the pickup truck was found to be folded in half. Uh, the driver was walking around with minimal injuries. Uh, charged with OUI, he was charged with OUI and a few other things. September twenty-third, individual was arrested in Acton for a Klasby warrant on his residence on Milton Mills Road. Um, he resisted, which resulted in TASER deployment. Um, okay, let's read through the lines here. September twenty-fourth, there was an arrest for domestic violence on a home on Acton Ridge Road. Uh, the individual also had two outstanding warrants and then um, ongoing events. September twenty-fifth, sexual assault evidence kit was collected from the Beverly, Massachusetts Police Department that appeared to have taken place from a sexual assault in Acton. Um, and then the same day, there was a report of a twelve-year-old juvenile from Shapley indicated um, they were sexually abused by a family member in Shapley.
Does that look like sort of an increasing level of incidences?
Um, no, I think that's, I think that's about the same that we normally get.
That's good.
Yeah.
Usually more in Shapley than that.
Yeah, Acton had, Acton had quite a few this time and.
I guess that's, and it may just be a fluke and that's fine.
Right.
Do they indicate what the response time has been for these?
No, I mean, we can, we can certainly check, um, but I think one of the reasons, they certainly want the.
We should have that.
The board to know what's going on, but they also, you know, when we get these off and they'll say, and this is why we're not, you know, patrolling traffic as well as we might want to on Goose Pond Road or on Milton Mills Road, because these are the investigations that they're handling.
I think we should keep, I think we should ask for the response time because.
Response times for each incident?
For each incident. I'd like to know what that is.
Okay.
Makes sense to everyone?
Sure.
Yeah, but you know, as we're about to renew a contract and thinking about the, the future of.
Yep.
Of policing in, in the town, we should understand whether, that will give us some indications whether or not what we have is reasonable.
Sure.
Thank you.
We still got to, we still got to continue looking forward.
That's, yeah, yeah, exactly.
All right, that's all I have, David.
What's that?
That's all I have.
Oh, you're good, okay. Department ahead, Community Chair Updates, Mary Grant.
Oh, Dan, Dan's on the agenda from.
He's up. You're up and rolling, go ahead.
Just to let you know that the guy that chips the brush started today.
Who's doing that shift for?
Hitchens, Hutchins?
Huckins.
From Huckins, yeah. I always call him Hutchins.
They had a Farmington?
Huh?
They had a Farmington?
Yes. Uh, he'll be there, he started today. His two trucks broke down and he'll be there tomorrow and hopefully finishing up on Friday. The gate will be open, but the transfer station is closed.
Now, you guys are combining that now, right? You guys haul your brush up there?
Yeah, everything's up there.
So how much is this expenditure roughly?
He hasn't given me a bill yet, but he quoted last year seven thousand, if everything was in one spark.
Give you a price this time?
No.
And we've cleared with Kelly Insurance and Workers' Comp and all that?
Uh, he was faxed it. He told the insurance to fax it yesterday.
But he hasn't been on site yet?
He's on site now, yeah.
Right now? So we really want to reach out to her and physically confirm that she has them?
Yeah, I meant to today and it just.
But he's already on site?
He's on site, yeah.
Um.
Has he done any work?
He loaded two trucks.
Okay.
Yeah.
It looked like the pile was bigger than last year.
Oh, very muchly.
It was, it was almost out to the entrance.
Right, and Will had.
Guys have been hauling up there or did you?
I haven't really hauled that much. I think I hauled.
This is a first.
It's mostly town stuff.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I mean, not town stuff, but.
It is what it is. I'm just, it looked like it had grown quite a bit.
Property owners, you know, that's uh, and Will stacked it up twice too. So just letting everybody know that the gate will be open, but we are closed.
Thank you.
Okay.
Awesome. Um, Dan.
Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of the Mary Grant Committee. Um, we have scheduled our annual pumpkin carving for Saturday, October twenty-first of this year, one to three P.M. There's a lot going on that day. I understand. Um, Shapley is doing their truck or treat that night, uh, and I thought I heard that the rec committee was doing something that morning, so we're kind of.
Not that we're aware of.
Okay, kind of in the middle of a couple of different things, but uh, we're officially scheduled for the twenty-first, one to three. Uh, we have a commitment for roughly fifty pumpkins right now. We're looking to get a hundred total, a hundred give or take. Uh, so if anyone has pumpkins out there in TV land or anywhere else, um, give us a call. We'll happily take some off of your hands. Um, which brings a couple of questions. Uh, my committee would like to know, Jennifer, if we could instruct your town handyman to put our event on the sign out front?
After the tax day comes and goes?
Yes.
Yes. Send me an email. We'll have him pull letters and I'll reach out to him.
I will, absolutely, and uh, my committee is asking for permission to uh, reach out to our webmaster and see if we can post it on the web and in the weekly newsletter for a couple of weeks.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Why would you need permission from the webmaster?
I'm asking your permission to ask the webmaster.
Everything that goes on the website.
I misunderstood you. I thought you were asking for permission.
I thought so too.
Okay, good.
So, so basically, I'm asking for permission to post it.
Got it.
Is what it amounts to.
Understood.
Um, the only other thing I have is not Mary Grant related. I was before you, two or three weeks ago, asking about the newsletter, perhaps posting the newsletter link on uh, the What's Up in Acton Facebook page. Uh, Tom, you had asked for some time to think about it. Have you thought about it?
My only concern is we shut comments off. I.
We can do that. That's easy.
I think, I have no problem with the town posting things there. It's a good, a lot of people read it, but when people start commenting on it, it gets out of, it gets crazy, so. We just want the comments shut off.
We can absolutely do that. That's not an issue.
All right.
That was it for me. Thank you very much.
That make sense to everyone?
Well, that's perfect. I've seen some of the comments.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I don't see anybody who do liaison updates. Anybody got any updates?
Just had some communication with the school board about potentially having a meeting, but. Uh, just a few exchanged the emails with the school board about a meeting between the select board and us, but we kind of handled that and going to respond to them later this week about that.
Um, I did meet at the transfer station last week, Friday, when they, Sebago Tech was up there. That was Friday, yeah. And uh, had a chat with them as far as what they're doing and with Robin, with some potential, maybe some changes up there for the better, so. And as Jennifer alluded to earlier about, um, met with the fire chief briefly about the condition of the tower and there is definitely some need up there. Um, we own what, two point one acres, I think?
Lease two point three.
Lease, yeah, lease two point three acres. So there was some, some stuff that was not ours there. So the home, the property owner's been contacted to move that stuff because the inspector did notice that.
Is that being mowed and everything?
Being, I don't think it was mowed at the time, but it's going to be all cleaned up and, yeah, more to follow on that one, so. Yep.
Well, I've had a couple, couple of calls with Mark Roy, who's a liaison with the, with the accounting firm that is implementing their services for the town. Things are going well.
He's wrapped up the June bankrupts?
I've heard from you and Kelly that things from our end are going well. Uh, he talked about his plans for um, uh, producing a set of financials for us so we could get a sense of, depending on when we get the audit, uh, hopefully, it seems to be moving forward with the audit. They seem to be um, on a, on a better schedule this year than we saw last, but just in case, Mark is preparing a, a profit and loss statement so we can understand where we were at the end of the year. Um, and so all things seem to be moving along well there.
Agreed.
Um, the cemetery committee has not met yet?
No, they're meeting in October and I'll send you that reminder.
And the warrant and finance committee has not met. Have they set a date?
They have set a date in October.
October, did.
Um, I don't have it memorized, but I can tell you.
Just.
What is it?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
October twenty-third, okay. Is that a Wednesday?
No.
Monday? Okay, great. Thank you.
Um, I don't have any, any updates, so we'll move on. So we, old business, road invoices, timesheets.
Yes, as you recall, last, last week, two weeks ago, I guess, we had a discussion about the form and content of billing invoicing from the road, uh, the road commissioners and there was some discussion about that and I volunteered to take the documents that we have today from our two commissioners and look at those and make some recommendations. Um, actually, I think the, uh, call it an Excel spreadsheet that, uh, I think Adam, you're preparing. I'm not sure Will is, but I think you.
I do, yeah.
You do it. Um, I actually think that's fine. I think it's a great schedule and it has all the elements that we need. Uh, what I would like to see is one of those um, with each submission for each project. If you're doing um, you know, the Hopper Road, put in the detail for the Hopper Road. If you're doing on another road, put the detail for that. So we know exactly what the costs are for. Right now, they're sort of all, they're for, is it weekly? They can submit it?
Mm-hmm.
So if you're doing three projects, submit three forms with the totaling for the three, so we can keep track of what these projects are actually costing us. Make sense?
Sure.
How does that sound to you, gentlemen?
Good.
Okay, Will, you all set with that?
So you're talking about the, the sheet that we fill out, the paper one we fill out too? Is that the one you're talking about?
I, I, look, you need to submit a time card for yourself. That's, that's a given, right? The, the other is a.
The spreadsheet, you're doing that as well?
Yeah, I submit a spreadsheet every week. What he's saying is this, you're going to submit your bills from your subcontractors like you would do any other time. Um, you're going to do your timesheet like you normally would for yourself and the employee, uh, but he's saying, say, um, what road are you working on? Say West, West Shore Drive, okay? If you're doing a West Shore Drive project, you're going to do a layout on that Excel sheet for just West Shore Drive. Okay, so like I've been doing. You're going to do, say you're doing the, the access road off West Shore Drive. That's a different road.
Different budget, you know?
Different budget line.
Yeah.
So, because at the end of the day, if we, if we start converting over like we were talking about doing with, with these um, projects, okay? Instead of just giving pavement, we do projects each one. That way there we can keep track of what each project's costing. Right, but have you seen, I did that the last couple of times. Have you seen my?
I'm sorry, Will, I did not. I just looked at the ones that were given.
Well, the last, the last couple I've done, like if we work on the Detour Road, I'd send a bill, I'd send like the Excel spreadsheet and then I'd send a whole separate bill for the road and then if I did other town work, I'd send a spreadsheet, then a bill.
Okay.
But I understand.
I personally don't mind one bill for the week, so long as we have three schedules for three projects that total that one bill. Does that make sense to everyone? So one invoice for the week covering all of your projects and individual spreadsheets for each project for that week.
Okay.
Make sense?
All right, yeah.
Thank you.
Really, at the end of the day, might help you out, especially if we ever get into that RSM stuff there they build.
Have it all separated.
Right now, we can't, we really can't tell, you know, where the money is being spent. Thank you.
Um, okay, that's all done. Old business, we're going to go to new business. West Shore Drive Property Owners Agreement Extension.
Okay, so the agreement that you currently have with West Shore Development LLC was in place from September first through October fifteenth. You remember the property owner came to you and asked you for an extension? Um, so we had our attorney uh, do an addendum, which just simply changed the dates from October second to November second. Uh, the property owners at West Shore Drive have already reviewed it and are fine with it, so just waiting for a motion to sign.
What happened is we, we pushed off the excavation for the project until October.
Yeah, they asked for the extension.
And so.
Make a motion?
Yep.
To extend the uh, the agreement regarding the access road for West Shore Drive project for the, for the culvert replacement uh, to November second, did I hear?
Yes.
Is that what it was, Jennifer?
Yes.
November second.
Second, all in favor?
I just want to, oh, you're signing it?
Doesn't necessarily result in any additional costs. It's just moving the timeline back.
We didn't start paying it as early as we thought.
I just wanted to clarify.
And thanks to Will for pointing that out and reminding me that we needed to extend it because, appreciate that.
What's the date today?
What's the date?
The fourth?
Today's the fourth.
Yeah, the fourth. There you go. Yep. Yep.
We're going to couple of them today.
One's just an update.
Let's give it.
One's just an update.
Yeah. Won't go so long, we don't get, never happen on it, I'll say. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll do that under the business.
Yeah, we can do that. We would, we'd have to uh.
Just, when you think appropriate, just turn it on then.
Okay, we got everybody signed up. Yeah, yeah, there we go. Awesome. Okay, where are we now? Article forty-three, Tattle Street.
So I think that Mr. Ward is here. The road committee recently met to consider the application, um, Tattle Street. It was emailed to you all, but they met, right?
We did meet, yes. Good evening. Um, so on the agenda for tonight is the Article forty-three application from Tattle Street. Um, on the twenty-eighth, myself and members of the committee did do a site visit. Um, and I'm very impressed with the um, condition of Tattle Street and it's an example of, I think, Article forty-three actually working really well because it's allowing them to do uh, work um, to really mitigate the runoff into the lake. And um, in this application, we found it to be complete. Um, it was very extensive. And um, we looked at the, the road, um, uh, put the portion of the road in question. Um, and we could see that there was runoff coming off of um, uh, Thirty-Fourth Street and the plunge pool and the culvert currently were not able to handle all the, the water coming off of the hill. And um, so it was being diverted directly into the lake. So what this uh, project will do is um, put another eighteen-by-twenty culvert side by side because they can't um, go too deep because of the ledge, um, to put a bigger one in, so it's going to put side by side. They'll um, uh, clean out and extend the plunge pool to allow for um, uh, more gathering of, of the water. So the two new culverts can handle it and take it out into the lake where it should be. Um, and uh, we, uh, we met as a committee on the twenty-eighth, the evening of the twenty-eighth and it was an unanimous vote from the committee to um, recommend approval for uh, payment for all this work.
How much was the request?
Uh, the request is for four, well, it's, it's, the total bill is four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, so.
Three thousand.
Three thousand, yeah.
Is, is there an association for that road?
Correct, yeah, so.
And have they taken a vote on this and, and support this?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's one of those.
I just.
That's a, that's.
That's a requirement of the.
Thank you.
The application.
Association done, has done a really nice job.
Good.
Yeah, they're doing a great job.
Wonderful.
Okay, um, you guys won't look through this, you want to make a motion? Just going to hung out over here for a little while.
It's. Okay.
You think, Dan? Is it good over there?
Just wanted to kind of see a little bit more because I haven't had the chance to look at it.
Does he need time to review it?
What's up?
Does he need time to review it?
Yeah.
I mean, I would, I.
If you need time, you can table it till next week.
Prefer to table it next week. I haven't really had time to.
Is this time sensitive?
Yes.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yep, they're waiting to proceed with the work.
Have they done the work?
No.
No, so I mean.
No.
Are they going to stop within the next week or so?
I believe so.
Well, normally they pay for it and we reimburse them anyway, so it's not like, I mean, are they not going to do the work if the town doesn't get the payment?
If he wants to redo it, he should be.
He has, he has to table it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's probably what we undo then, so Dan can uh, you know, look over that because he's unfamiliar with it, so unfortunately, we'll just table it.
Can I just see the top packet too? When you have, I'll take the packet back.
Okay, and I'm very sure it's probably fine, but.
Thanks for bringing this in.
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, and uh, we got another Article forty-three, Langley Shore Drive.
Well, that was more Ed asked for that one to be put on the agenda.
Okay, well.
Yep.
But you're welcome to stay.
Committee's here, so.
Yeah.
We already voted for that one, right?
Yeah, we already did. I mean, uh, when we voted for it, there was a stipulation that I had to go take a look at it and I said I was going to take Jay with me. We did. We met over there last Wednesday night, Thursday night, whatever it was. And uh, yeah, the work looked good. Everything looks fine with, so. Uh, a few members of the road, another member of the Road Committee was there, as well as the, uh, um, Road Association person, so. Actually, Leslie Berlin was there, so, yeah, everything looked fine, so.
So.
That one's, all they could do is submit a bill and.
Yes, they have to submit a bill, we don't automatically.
Yeah.
We already okayed that, right?
Yeah. We okayed it, but they, they gotta submit the bill so we can pay it, reimburse them.
We're gonna do this, are we doing the same thing, we're gonna end up doing the same thing with our, um, uh, Tattle Street too anyways, right?
Yep.
What I mean.
So, we'll have to go down and make sure it's done.
Oh, yeah, when it's done, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just gonna get a refresh here, we haven't done a whole lot of these lately, so.
Yeah, um, one thing that probably would help, it'll help me, I know, when you go out and look at them?
Yep.
Let me know, and I'll go, I like to see it beforehand.
Oh, okay.
Because that way I really know what I'm looking at afterwards.
Okay, I, I did ask you to go.
Did you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, on the same day.
I hate it when that happens.
I hate it.
Yeah, uh, and you're, you did say that you'd rather see it afterwards.
Okay.
But, uh.
Yeah, well, I mean, after, after looking at the, the, uh, yeah, the Langley Shore one, it's like, wait a minute.
You're not alone, Ed.
I really, okay, good, I'm in good company, uh, yeah, so just.
Yeah, sure.
Great, um, and that actually raises the question for me, is, is there a better way to do this, um, because I had assumed that you all had a copy of this prior to this meeting, and, um, so we did all our work and.
Think we get emails on them, so.
It gets held up.
I wasn't gonna say that.
So, it would be great if.
Yeah.
Is, is there any reason why they can't just email the selectmen and you directly with the package so we could look at them?
They sent to the.
Or were they, Jennifer?
Yeah, you already get, yeah, so you did all get this.
Thank you, Jay, I wasn't gonna throw my board under the bus, but we'll follow up more, we'll follow up better for the next one.
And just to be also clear, um, uh, the, uh, Langley Shores was a, was a different case. Normally, um, you don't hold up the money waiting for that inspection from the selectmen, but if that's going to be.
Well, we've never released, we've never released funds until it's, it's, the job is done, correct?
Right, and we'll, we'll go and check that.
I don't think we've got it going out.
Adele says, Adele says no, that we pay them in advance.
Well, that's what we're supposed to be doing.
I think it's great that Ed goes and inspects them and then.
Yeah, and I'm happy to.
I'm so comfortable signing on.
So, so, moving forward.
That's what you want to do?
But to be clear, all, everything, every other one has never been done this way.
When they, when they do their calcium spread or whatever, we all pay for that, I mean, honestly, I don't think we have to go down and inspect that.
No.
But we should be doing them all the same, I mean, do you wanna pay them after the job is done, or are they looking for it before, so they don't have to front the money? That could be.
Well, can I say?
Come on up. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong.
So, I'm Adele Scritchfield, I'm with Tattle Street Road Association, and, um, we have gotten the check in advance of the work, and I think if you're trying to make it easier for associations to take advantage of this, you really don't wanna hold up the money, because they may not be able to fund the project without this, so if you're gonna go through two approval processes.
One of the, I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, but one of the issues that came across, remember the auditors picked up on Article forty-three, one of the years, and what they were saying is, how are you, how are you proving that they did the work if you cut the check in advance, this came up on one of our, one of our letters, right? How, you know what I mean, if you, if you're paying in advance, how do you know that they did the work? So, we did get it, get, I don't wanna say written up, but it came on one of our management letters, that's when I think we started paying it in the end.
If you have a contract to go and do the work this week.
It'll take net thirty, right?
Next week, you'll call, call the lead, have him look at it, you'll have a check cut.
Yeah, we could do.
Well, if they don't mind a net thirty, if they don't mind a net thirty payment plan, that's fine, but I'm just saying.
Most contractors don't ask for the money upfront anyway, all of it, so.
Something else to consider is, is to advance the money when it's, you know, when it needs to be, and have the association provide an accounting with the invoices, demonstrating that, uh, the payments are within the amount specified.
I think that's what we're, that's what we were told.
I think that will satisfy the auditors.
So, what do you wanna do going forward, do you want to release the money in advance, or do you wanna release it afterwards?
Well, I, you know, I think, weren't we doing it before?
Well, we were doing it before, but that's what I'm saying, there's a management letter that changed that.
The whole deal with up there Langley Shores was, you know, kind of screwed up deal the first one. The reason why we did that was because of stuff that was said on TV.
We were looking.
Things were gonna be done.
Right.
Something, yeah.
I would imagine the associations don't have a big checkbook.
That's my point.
So, I, I think we could advance it, and so long as we get an accounting after the fact, Jennifer?
I really think there's a management letter that addressed this, and there was a reason we started paying it in the end. We'll get a definite answer for next week.
So, we have to come back next week.
Well, in any event, they're gonna pay you, this is true, I'm just here to remind you.
Well, you can see on TV, I mean.
In any event, I mean, you don't have to be here next week.
Do you want, you don't need us here next week?
No, it's, this one's.
Alright, thank you.
Although, I mean, if you're gonna be discussing this, right, after the selectman goes through all this package.
If he has any questions, I'm sure the other selectmen can answer, on behalf of Tattle Street, this is a pretty routine.
Honestly.
I know.
We're all set here.
I know that.
The fourth one hasn't looked at it.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Out of respect, we're just letting him go through it, so.
Okay.
He can do his job, and, because we can approve this right now, we're just being respectful.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Sand bids.
Okay, so we have our list that we send them out to, a couple that were hand-delivered, we had a couple of calls that came in, we've kept track of everything, and we got one returned to, from Northeast Ready Mix, the new Berwick address they gave us. It was returned.
Northeast Ready Mix, that's not who you. That was returned?
Yes. But they also came in and picked one up, is that the same, I'm just telling you, we've covered all our.
We're not talking, we're not talking about up.
I don't know all these different pits, I just, we've kept very detailed notes of who.
Oh, good, we've got some different ones in.
Yes.
I don't think we've ever got one.
Yeah, we got a few, a few names that I've never even heard of, so, alright. Trying to cut myself, I just gotta get this started, alright, landscapers depot. Uh, remember the form that you asked for is for three thousand yards, so landscapers depot is at thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents, they are open, uh, year-round, please allow for two-day turnaround, is what they say. This gentleman likes to tape his all four corners. Huh?
I'd say in case you accidentally hit the floor and open.
Says Seth McCoy Trucking, he is looking at thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents, uh, delivered in full truckloads, and yes, he is also, um, available nights and weekends.
What was the first one, thirteen?
Thirteen twenty-five. Uh, Curtis Earthworks, fourteen dollars per yard, and yes, year-round, business hours, weekends, et cetera. Milton Mason LLC.
Milton what?
Mason LLC.
Milton Mason LLC out of Cape Nettic, Maine. Milton Mason LLC is delivering to you year-round at nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Sure that's right? Nine dollars?
Nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Cape Nettic.
Uh, they're not hauling from Cape Nettic, I'm sure of that.
It can't be. It must have been around here somewhere.
Milton Mason LLC, David Zanini, Z-A-N-N-I, nine ninety-five, no matter how many times I look at it. Toby Earthworks.
What is it?
Toby Earth Works, no, Toby Earth Materials and Escavation. Toby is at a fifteen dollars and twenty-five cents. Fifteen twenty-five, and also answered yes to all of the questions. Says a return, Mr. Toby, hand-delivered to Monarch, and that is it.
We never got one from, um, Monarch Martin.
Those are the bids that we received.
Okay. They asked, they, hopefully they got their own thing this year.
Yeah.
They asked for it.
Yep.
It was hand-delivered, they picked it up.
Yep. Good. Okay, well, um, your commissioners, can you come on up here for a minute?
Here.
Do you wanna proceed?
Take a look at these.
You may have to do a little.
Research.
Yeah, can we like table it till next week?
Of course.
We always do.
Yeah.
But we're just asking how you guys are gonna proceed with it. They're all pretty close, except for.
One of them. One of them, yeah. All within, other than the one that's nine ninety-five.
Yeah, 'cause you, you got three twenty-four, uh, thirteen twenty-five, thirteen seventy-five, and fourteen dollars, and then you got, um, nine ninety-five, and then the fifteen twenty-five.
So, landscapers depot came, is that the one you've been using?
Yes.
Yeah, you've been using them right along?
Yep.
They came in second.
And, and you've had good results with them?
Yeah, every time.
Yep.
Um, so how are we gonna check out this other one, does anyone know them?
We can phone the phone number, we can call them.
Well, I, I think we oughta ask them for some references.
Call them, look and see where they are. Where they're coming from, yeah, where the materials coming from.
They do business with.
I mean, they could be, um, a company that's gonna work out and pull the material out of Monarch.
Yeah.
True. Very well could be. It might be why there isn't one.
Right.
So. Good idea, yeah, well, research.
If you can photocopy these.
Sure.
Do you recall what the bid was last year?
Ten dollars.
I know.
So, wow, they went up, uh, thirty percent, uh.
These prices that we've been getting on our screen sand is dirt cheap, I pay between, uh, fifteen and twenty dollars a yard for screen sand all over, and I gotta pick it out. I just paid twenty-six dollars a yard in Waldeboro.
No kidding.
Yeah, screen sand, so, yeah, this, this is cheap. Okay, we're gonna move on from that, so you guys are gonna do your research, yeah, good. A Peppin land donation.
So, this came up several, several months ago, and then it came up, you guys all saw an email that in September, he wanted to confirm that you saw it. Um, David made mention of just putting it on the agenda and addressing it, we had originally told him it was the wrong time of year, but.
Yeah, at the time there, we, we already set it on, everything, and we couldn't really throw it on, so, um, yeah, he's persistent, so instead of, you know, leading him along here, we, you know, I think we ought to just, you know, make a decision on this right now, see if this is something we're interested in, looking forward to, uh, looking forward to doing. Um, I've given my.
Do you want an update, Dan, I don't know if they were on the board when that happened.
You guys weren't on the board, what happened was, um, they approved the pit up here on the H Road for, um, what was it, Peppin? Just Peppins, Peppins Pit, I don't know what they call it, and after they approved it, um, they, he came to the, uh, town with, um, he came with an actual.
Yes, there was a map.
Yeah.
Yep.
And he wanted to donate, uh, a, a large section of property to the town of Acton, and, um, and myself, uh, I wasn't for it. Um, a little research, um, Three Rivers, they tried donating to them, they didn't want it, um, myself, I, I don't think it's something the town of Acton should be doing, just taking properties off people's hands, just, just because, um, you know, every time we take an acre of property, whether or not it's in tree growth, which is already in tree growth, so we're not getting a whole lot of tax on it now, but you know, we won't get any if we take it, so, um, it's all, um, from what I get, um, um, not wetland, but res- resource protected.
Yeah.
Area, so it's not.
The town can't do anything with it?
Can't do anything, you know.
Has no recreational value or public.
Right, where, Three Rivers were taken.
They wanna put a, right away through the middle of it, so they can access to something else, and, so it's not like we'd be the only one, so, I, I just think there's something we could, we ought to stay away from.
You know, I think this, this, uh, whole idea of the gift came up when the Peppins were, uh, taking us through the planning board, and I believe there was a lot of interest on the part of the planning board in seeing that that gift get made, and I, I think Peppin, at the time, was thinking that Three Rivers would be a likely source for that to be donated. I suspect they're, they feel they've made a commitment to the town to make this donation, um, and so I think they're going through the options, if you will, to, you know, to try to fulfill the, the discussion they have with the planning board, um, so if we choose not to take it, I think we oughta just make clear in the record that, as far as I'm concerned, that shouldn't leave any sort of sense of obligation the Peppins may, the planning board may feel they have on this. I think they've done their best effort, and they couldn't do it.
I don't believe the planning board ever told me had to.
No, no, but I think.
I think they told the planning board they were gonna.
Yeah, there was some, there was some, everyone was fine about it, but I think we oughta just make clear that, look, they made an effort.
Yeah.
Didn't work.
Yeah.
Or, depending on what we vote here anyways, um, it may not work, and we just move on.
I'm just curious as to, what was the reason why the Three Rivers didn't want it, do we know that, or?
Because of the right-of-way going through it, and, and something about a snowmobile trail on the backside of it, and there were just too many moving parts. So, uh, when I talked to a lady, actually when I was doing that news thing.
Oh, yes, for the Renaissance Fair?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, for the Renaissance Fair, yeah, I ended up talking to a lady from Three Rivers, and she was explaining some of that, it made more sense after I talked to her about it. Um, so, I figure we get this on the agenda, we talk about it, um, if we wanted, if somebody on the board wanted to do it, we can, we don't have to make a vote today, but, um, but at the end of the day, I'd like to get this, wash this off the plate, and, um.
I think if it was something that we had full control over the whole piece of property, um, think about it, not saying we'd do it, but, yeah, no, I'm not in favor of this, I don't believe.
I think it would be, I, I'm not quite sure what it would look like, but I think having a policy statement adopted by the board that, uh, kinda lays out the criteria that we would consider, uh, appropriate in accepting a land donation. Uh, for me, it's all about, well, what's the public good, what's the interest of the citizens, how is that being advanced here? If this is a piece of property no one's gonna use, and we just end up losing tax revenue on it, that doesn't make a lot of sense for anyone, so, um, I, I don't know if we can check with other towns, my guess is, there are policies out there that towns have on, on this, and, you know, perhaps we can plagiarize theirs.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, so then it, it's not, it doesn't look arbitrary on our part that we're accepting this one and not that one, there should be some, some basis for it.
That's one reason why I didn't wanna take, 'cause I don't wanna not take, take this one, not take another one.
Yeah.
You know, wanna be consistent about it, and, um, and we've already got enough irons in the fires now between our farm, we got other properties that we already own, and, um, so, anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, um, um, deny the request from Peppins to have property donated to the town. That we not accept that, that offer.
I'll second it.
Put it away, Jennifer, you get that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All in favor? Okay. Move on, we got an executive session, um.
Public comment first?
Yeah, that's a good idea, I was just thinking whether or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do public comment, great idea, public comment?
Dennis Long, I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen, uh, back, I don't remember when it was, three, four weeks ago, when you were talking about Article forty-three. And I think Tom asked a question, uh, what are they doing other towns, uh, 'cause it, it was mentioned that there's very few roads in town that receive these benefits compared to, uh, all the roads and private roads in town, and I attended the Road Committee meeting the other night, and I was very pleased to hear that the state has changed the law on towns spending money on private roads, and they gave two cases, uh, that the town was doing it, and one was Wyndham, one was Gray, the law got changed this year, and obviously, there's, um, restrictions and whatever on doing it, but, uh, it looks like, uh, that we're gonna be able to help all the private roads, and hopefully, in our next town meeting, we'll be, uh, voting on that, thank you.
Sounds expensive.
Yeah, uh, you know, I'd love to hear more about what this law change was, and, um, this is a big issue, and can be an expensive one too, and, um, it's not to say I'm for or against it, but I, I, personally, I'd love a little more education on, on, uh, what the law is, what our, what our potential need is, and so if we're gonna take something to the town, I'd wanna understand, you know, how do we obtain this thing?
I, I agree, Tom, it, it. I, I agree, Tom, and, and the road committee said that they're going to do some more investigation into this.
That's great, 'cause that's what I was gonna ask. If the road committee...
Yes.
Personally, if they could, you know, kind of figure out...
They will.
What other towns are doing, what the law changes, what are the possibilities, and then we could, you know, can at least consider what those might be.
Yeah, that's what they said the other night.
Great.
So, they, they're gonna work on it like you asked.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, Cindy Hart, Abbott Road. Uh, there's a conference in Saco on November first called Roadway Fundamentals that's being put on by the DOT Local Road Center. Um, selectmen, people who aren't in finance committees, and of course, anybody that works in the business, the commissioners or, or committees, uh, should attend. It's, uh, I know you were there, Dave. We took it together a few years ago. This is the first time they've been able to run it again since, um, the COVID. It's a full-day class. You'll get your six credit hours, but beyond that, you'll find out about all the new laws, or you'll find the right person to ask, so if you can possibly be there on that Wednesday, um, we've got to book it fast. They only have forty-five seats. When I've been to these before, towns like Canny Buckle call, and they'll send in their whole crew. York usually sends in everybody that works for them. So, um, already, I'm going, Leslie's going, Jay is going. Um, I'd love to speak, I mean, two of the gentlemen here, of course, have worked on roads for years, so they know a lot, but if you don't know anything about it, it's a good start, and it gives you the basics. So I would just like to say that if you want, I can, let me know before I go, and I can arrange to have you signed up tomorrow.
What was the date on that again?
It's November first. It's gonna be in Saco. It's a good class, I know. I thought you enjoyed it, Dave.
Oh, I just love going to those things.
And they give you a great, they give you a great lunch.
Hot facts now, so...
You get a great lunch and a lot of information.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, where are we now? Okay, public comment, any more public comment?
Nope.
Can I add?
Nope.
Just a couple, I have a couple of things. Um, first one, just, if those of you don't know, October's Domestic Land Swornness Month. I know we heard on the sheriff's report, there are a couple of cases, um, maybe there is some...
What? What was it?
The sheriff's of the...
Yeah, domestic.
Domestic land...
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah.
Um, if anybody needs help or anything like that, caring and limited, it's our County Domestic Land Resource Center. Um, they're great to reach out, I know the town, and make a donation to them, um, and they support residents in Acton. And the other thing is, you may have seen on social media, but, um, the Acton PTG is doing their candy drive for the chunker treat, um, so if you want to support the kids, that is a great program that they put on, so definitely, um, they, there's a box right out here in the town hall, the, um, fire department, the transfer station, I believe, and one other, I don't know...
Yeah, so we like to have contests about who gets theirs filled first, so...
Oh, okay, so drop your candy off here. Definitely, if you, if you want to make a donation to them, it's a really great program, um, and, and if you want to support them, you can drop us some candy and support them. That's all.
I, I have an issue that I'd like to bring up. Topic?
A topic or an issue?
A topic.
Okay, well, no issues.
No issues, no issues. Actually, I was talking to, I think, Lee, and we had a discussion with, uh, um, I don't know if it was Inland Fisheries or whatever, and it, and the issue of placement of moorings in the waterways in the town, um, we have no ordinance on that today, and some towns, uh, have found that, um, it was helpful to have one, to clarify who can place moorings where, and without that, they can be placed anywhere within the, I think, two-hundred-foot boundary. And so I think this is probably something that initially ought to be researched by council, to understand what, what the parameters are that the town could consider, and, 'cause I think it would benefit all, we have so many lakes and, you know, waterfront property, that I think...
We have had the issue before.
Yeah, we have had this issue before, so I, I think this is a great time. Now we're going into winter. If we're gonna do this, let's, let's see if we can get this, uh, organized and figure out what our rules ought to be, but, um, I, I think it has the potential, if we don't have these, this ordinance in place, that there could be some real mayhem on the lakes, and so we need to, we need to address this. Any other comments? Other thoughts on this?
Well, no, it's a great idea.
Good idea.
Okay, so, is it in the council? Um, I know some of the ti, I think some of the towns up in Sebago have done this.
Oh, I'm sure they have, yeah.
Have done this, and, uh, Lee, do you have any more information on that, or am, am I remembering this correctly? We had this conversation? Okay, thank you. Um, okay.
Usually once a year, we usually have somebody come in.
Yeah, and Jason's had issues as well, as far as people coming, yes, often.
So...
It's come up many times over the years.
Ordinance will protect the property owners on the lake.
Okay, anything else? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion. We're going to executive session, four oh five six E, legal counsel at six fifty-nine.
Second.
All in favor?
I believe there will be an action at the end.
Come out of executive session, four oh five six E, legal counsel at seven oh five.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. So, um, do we...
I'll take it from there?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we spoke to, we had a little situation we had to straighten out, spoke to our legal counsel, um, got to do with inland fisheries, inland fisheries and wildlife. Um, everything has been straightened out, and is it gonna take a vote on this, or just the fact that we're gonna follow all, all the guidelines set for what?
Acknowledge that you understand the conditions.
Between inland fisheries and wildlife.
Why don't we just take a vote on this?
Contractor, yeah.
So, you make a motion that we're gonna abide by the, uh, agreement?
I'll put that in a motion form, yeah.
Okay, yep.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Got it?
Thank inland fisheries with, uh, working with us.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So, uh, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion. Make a motion, we adjourn before Tom heads out the door.
Second.
All in favor? You're in favor? You left us already.
He was already gone.
I forgot about the vote. Excuse me.
I'm not voting, I...
Okay, good, good night.